For the Wednesday, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four Planning Commission meeting. And we'll start out with roll call.
Steve Hakinen, Lake Enchantment.
Dennis Ferraro, he goes to Dennis.
Bethany Cody, Lake Enchantment.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Eric Power, Staff Planner.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning Minister.
And Linda Winslow, is it closed?
I don't know. I can't remember if I heard from her that she wasn't going to be here or not, but we'll mark her as absent for now.
I didn't see anything.
She might have sent something earlier, but.
Minutes from previous, or approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Minutes from previous meeting of March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four.
Move to approve previous minutes of the March thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Public comment. Anyone wishing to address the Planning Commission can come forward now or wait till any agenda items and come forward then. No one coming up. We'll move on to six A, new business. Special use permit public hearing number zero four, one zero two four dash one. Proposed short-term rental land used to be located on a property within the urban residential zoning district in Marquette Township. Property address is seventeen eighty-five East Avenue in Marquette. Tax ID is five two zero eight, three zero zero, zero two five zero zero. The applicant is Michelle Seibert, seventeen eighty-five East Avenue in Marquette. Jason.
Eric's gonna take this one.
Okay.
So staff has received a complete application for a short-term rental at seventeen eighty-five East Avenue. That is basically right on the city township border. Subject parcel is located in the urban residential zoning district and is surrounded by urban residential zoning. I think except for that one side where it borders the city.
They have very similar zoning on the other side.
Here's a map showing in the green dots the existing approved short-term rentals in Trowbridge Park and then the star kind of in the upper right-hand corner showing the proposed location that you guys are reviewing tonight. Probably got your slides. Neighbors within the three hundred feet of the subject property have been notified. Fees have been paid. Additional information is included in your packet, including the full application. It sounds like the applicant's intention is to rent out the property on a short-term basis while she is traveling for work. States it's a very small yard, so she'll be soliciting mostly other professionals and keeping it to a strict occupancy limit. I really don't have any, have anything other information at this point. The applicant is here to address the commission should you guys have any questions. And staff does not note anything that would prohibit approval. However, we would recommend that you hear all comments from the public on the matter deciding, prior to deciding the land use.
Did we receive any correspondence?
We have not.
We did perform some property maintenance in that particular area in the last couple of days.
Not on the subject property though.
No, no.
What kind of maintenance did you have to do?
We had a complaint about kind of a college house.
Familiar with that one.
That we reached out to the owner. It's beside the point, but he took care of the situation for us. And you're aware of the implications for taxes if you rented out more than fourteen days in a year, you lose your P R E exemption. Okay.
Would you like to add anything before we open the public hearing? Then let's open the public hearing at seven oh five. Anyone wishing to speak may come forward at this time. Do you have any questions before we close the public hearing since no one is coming forward? Okay, so no one wishing to speak then? We can close the public hearing at seven oh six. And any questions, comments?
Yeah, is there any number, is there any concern about the number of short-term rentals in that area? On the township's part?
I mean, speaking for Jason, but I don't think from staff, I mean, there's none on East Avenue. The address label on the map on the right on the screen right now kind of can't see it, but it kind of dead ends right there.
And here on's a non-completed street, is that correct?
Yep.
You get two dead ends there and the property to the south is actually wooded. You know, and again, we haven't had any problems with short-term rentals. They've all police themselves for the, from what we understand. I mean.
The only issue I would have is just in that kind of one block or one and a half block area, there are four in there. But I guess we're going to be addressing that in the future, coming up with, you know, more short-term rentals, so.
And I don't know how they're all being advertised, but I went on VRBO and just picked a random date and stuff and just saw how many was available in Trowbridge, you know, thinking that, oh, there's so many, but there, there was one. One showed up. So I don't know if it was like the dates or they're just, they're getting other means. They're not all just VRBOs. They're really being used for other.
Yeah, sorry, Bethany. For the sake of comparison, let's say to the city and Erica will give you, dazzle you with some numbers later, but the city allows two hundred and fifty and how many households do they have?
Just over nine thousand dwelling units.
So that's what percentage of the homes?
Three percent of the homes.
Okay. But moreover, the city, if you're looking at the city as a comparison, which Trowbridge Park clearly is because it's platted. The city doesn't allow more than one per block. And as you can see on the map, I don't think we have that problem either at this time. So even the request for succeed tonight is way down south on Orchard Street, which, where there are none right now. So they're pretty well dispersed even, even for the Trowbridge Park area. And when you think about the amount of homes, that's a, you know, that's a large-scale map and, you know, there's a lot of homes in there. So, you know, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, twelve or thirteen there. You know, over half of our four thousand residents live in that section. And did you come up with a maintenance plan or who's going to be taking care of it for you?
Yeah, I have a property manager who's a friend of mine that's taking care of other people's property before.
Yeah, there are services I hear nowadays that's basically hands-free and. That would address the normal questions that we asked.
Since I guess there aren't any objections by any neighbors or any issues, entertain a motion if anyone's interested.
And move to approve the special use permit request as designated in item six A of the agenda.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? We'll do a roll call vote then. Steve Hakinen?
Yes, excuse me, yes.
Dennis Ferraro?
Yes.
Bethany Cody?
Yes.
Linda Winslow?
Yes.
Jim Johnson's a yes. Okay, pass you down, no sleep?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll be in touch tomorrow.
Okay, point of thought, thank you.
You may call or we'll call you.
Okay, moving on to six B. Zoning text amendment, public hearing number zero four, one zero two four dash two. Proposed zoning text amendment to include vehicle sales, service, repair, parts and supplies of special land use in the resource production zoning district for the market township zoning ordinance. The applicant is Anthony Kaido, doing business as the Shop Diesel and Auto Repair, sixty-two forty U S forty-one South in Marquette. Jason or Eric?
I'll take this one. So, yeah, Mr. Kaido is here tonight along with the landowner's representative. And Mr. Kaido currently operates near the Dead River Storage or Dead River Lots. So just before you go over the tracks on five fifty, you take a left and that's really the only industrial zone property that we have. So he's located in there and been operating with success and he's growing, as I understand, and has purchased new equipment and technological equipment to help with vehicle repairs and wants to have his own place. And as such, he's been looking at this piece of property, which is just north of the current location where he's operating out of, although he doesn't own that building, I believe he's renting that building. So this opportunity would allow him to get out on his own and, you know, be a successful repair shop. The property, though, on the north side is zone resource production. And in our ordinance, the only two zoning districts that even entertain vehicle service, sales, repair and supply is the corridor, basically the general business district and then as a special use in the development district. So this property is zone resource production. So when we were approached by the landowner's representative, it was my suggestion to maybe apply to have a zoning text amendment done to allow this use in the resource production district by special use permit only. And that covers a couple of things. The Planning Commission would get to review if there were a myriad of diesel repair shops opening in the resource production district, which I don't think there will be. You would have the opportunity to review those on an individual basis. And one of the neat things and the provisions in the special use permit language is, you know, you have to look at, if somebody wanted to open up right next to them, you know, that, that use is already covered in that area. So that would be something that the Planning Commission probably would vote against because it would be redundant. So staff supports the request. It is by special use permit only. If the Planning Commission was to approve this proposed zoning text amendment tonight, we would gather up the meeting minutes and your commentary and send that off to the county planning commission for their review. And then that would go to the township board because they are the only body that has the ability to amend the ordinance or the zoning map. In this case, we'd just be making, basically in the land use nomograph, putting an S under resource production in the, in the zoning ordinance for vehicle sales, service and repair. Raw parts and supply, I guess it's called. You know, we are doing the master planning process this year, starting probably next month, or maybe June. And so this area is going to be interesting to look at from a future land use standpoint, given the fact that we have next to it will be a gravel operation. And there's other property in the area that could be developed if the developer or the property owner chooses to. I know that he desires to protect the property to the south of the former Flash Road in order to protect the trail system that's there. So that's benevolent of him. But there is a lot of property there that could be developed in other ways. And so it'll be interesting to review that from a future land use standpoint. We haven't had the chance to do that yet. So in an effort to try to get the applicant to where he wants to go, staff felt this was a reasonable route to approach the planning commission with.
So if it passes in the, with the county and then the township board, then he would have to come back here for the special permit?
Correct.
To do that?
Yeah.
And have a public hearing again for that?
Yes. And in a site plan, an engineered site plan for the building. I mean, if you talk to Mr. Kaido, his desire is to put up a high-quality, attractive building and to have, you know, just the room to operate and obviously you have a lot of the mining trucks running through there. You know, there's a myriad of heavy haulers in that area. So from a service standpoint or just a locational standpoint, it makes sense. If you look at the other land uses in the area, it's hard to see on here, but there's like a transformer to the east on the other side of the road or substation. There's some homes in the area, but there's some pretty good separation. I don't think, you know, this property's twenty acres in size. Plans on developing the entire twenty acres for trucks to, or a repair shop that would be kind of consolidated towards the road just for, you know, not wanting to put any huge driveway for, you know, the cost of that, I would assume is astronomical. So, you know, we really don't see it as being too impactful of a land use, if you will. You know, everything happens indoors, right? I mean, for the most part, so.
And where did you say this is permitted by right? Development?
Only along the corridor.
Oh, okay.
The traditional commercial district.
Okay.
But.
So you couldn't just change that zoning, you couldn't just have that zoning changed to?
Correct. That would be spot zoning effectively, yeah.
Can I ask you, has that land division application been submitted for this parcel?
That's a standalone parcel and has been since.
It's a standalone parcel as it is, okay. And it's in resource production? What's the minimum lot size in resource production?
Forty acres.
But this doesn't meet that because it's grandfathered in?
That's correct.
And when was this parcel separated out?
I called equalization. They said it's been like that since the fifties.
That's, that's, that individual parcel's been like this, okay.
Jason, I have a couple of questions. And I, I went back and looked at the video of the, of the February twenty-eighth meeting when the request for a special hearing was. So I, I listened to the comments from the broker, Mr., I'm sorry.
Talkstart.
Talkstart, thank you. And your comments and so forth. And I think your comment about, Steve asked, well, why don't you make that segregated business? And I think your comment was that's an intense industrial use and you wanted to leave a buffer zone between any intense industrial use and the residences and so forth. So I thought that was good. But I, something bothers me about this and I'll, I'll.
Ask you a couple of questions here. Where, where's the definition of this land use anywhere in our zoning ordinance? And I'm talking about vehicle, colon, sales, comma, service, repair, parts and supplies.
Yeah, it's likely not defined. It's something that was an afterthought and put in because it wasn't thought of initially. That's an excellent question, but I just happened to open up to the Vs and no, I don't see it either.
It's a, I did the search. I searched it manually and then I went on the computer and searched it. Other than a reference to, it is referenced, vehicle sales, service and repair, parts and supply in the use versus district nomograph in article fifteen on page twenty as a subcategory of road service, vehicle sale and service and fast food. And that category appears elsewhere in article nineteen in different areas. Yeah.
Other departments.
But, yeah, it's in urban residential, whatever. But I couldn't find any definition for the broader category either. So, I mean, there's no, there's no, there's no definition of road service, vehicle sale and service and fast food in our zoning ordinance either.
Fast food is under restaurant and that's, that is defined actually.
Okay, well, fast food might be, but then what about road service, vehicle sales and service? That's not defined.
Correct. That's a category of land use, as is, you know, light industry, heavy industry, residential, agricultural support. You're not going to find agricultural support defined in the ordinance either. That's a category of land uses. Commercial and entertainment's a category of land uses. And then there are specific land uses under that.
Right. But this doesn't appear anywhere in our ordinance as a category.
Right.
Okay. So my question to you is, can we legally amend our zoning ordinance for a land use that our ordinance fails to define?
That's a good question, Denny. And I think that's why the planning commission has the ability to discern other like land uses. I mean, the zoning administrator has the flexibility to discern like land uses in this category, or in this case too. But I think it's, I don't think it's beyond the scope of the planning commission to, you know, perhaps make a decision on it. You know what, you know.
So in other words, you're saying if it's either approved or disapproved, then that would be a decision. If it's approved, then it would be a decision to include it?
Well, this would all, if you guys make a decision on this, then it goes to the county and it goes to our legal counsel.
I understand. I understand. Okay. So we want to make a recommendation.
That's correct.
Okay, okay. But you, it doesn't, so it doesn't, it doesn't give you pause that we're going to amend our zoning text for a land use which is not defined in the ordinance?
I think it would be different if it was a rocket site, a rocket launch site. We have.
Sure would.
Vehicle sales, service shops all over, you know.
Yeah. I, I go by Mr. Kaido's business all the time, the one he's at now. And it's, it's behind the kombucha place there. The, it's a house, but they sell kombucha. But then he's farther down and you can't even see his business from the, from the road. And as far as I know, I looked at segregated business and it doesn't appear that his business even falls within that kind of heavy industrial use.
No, it doesn't, but that has been historically kind of a vehicle repair shop in different iterations.
Right, all right. Yeah, and I'm not saying it's, it shouldn't be there or anything like that.
Right.
You know. But anyway, okay. I've got a couple of other questions, but maybe they're more, maybe they're more pertinent to deciding whether this meets the criteria for amendment. But if you want to go through that now or you want to wait until the public, I mean, whatever is appropriate.
You're the planning commission. You guys have an ordinance that you're familiar with. I think I highlighted the areas that you need to consider when amending the ordinance and that's for you guys to decide on. Whether it meets the, you know, we told Mr. Kaido that this wasn't a slam dunk. This was something that would have to be deliberated by the planning commission.
Okay, well, then I'll, I'll just spit out all my concerns right now and then we can circle back on them if we need to or you can, you can tell me that it's not an issue. If you look at article ten, page two of article ten, which defines resource production, I'm not sure how this vehicle sales and service and repair, parts and supplies meets the stated intention, the stated intention of that provision, which is, quote, "to provide for a variety of different uses which are resource-based." That's one. And then if you go to the if you go to chapter eight of the master plan, page five, chapter eight, I guess it is. It talks about, again, the district's intended to provide for a variety of different uses which are resource-based. And then it talks about, under the current ordinance, this district allows single-family residential development on one acre lots. It's a special use. And then it talks about, page two of chapter eight, talks about future land use for, for resource production. Let me see if I can find it here. I'm sorry, I guess maybe I have a improper sight there. But anyway, I'm, I'm concerned that, you know, is it inconsistent with our, with the intention of resource production and for the future use for that area? And I may be wrong. I just want to, I just want to bring it up for discussion. The other thing is, you know, you, you talk about, and I'm glad you made the comment, that because it's a special use, if somebody else wanted to build one right next door, then we could say it's not going to happen. But what about the broad category that it falls under, which is vehicle sales? How about if somebody wanted to open up a car lot there? Or, you know, or maybe not there, but let's move farther up, the resource production map and you come to an area right up, right up in here. You want to see any vehicle sales, car lots up on the recreational corridor? I'm just, and I asked the question is, once you approve an amendment like this, which doesn't fit within the resource production and it's so broad that it says vehicle sales, you know, if somebody comes in and says, I want to open a used car lot up just south of Echo Lake on township property. And we say, well, no, you can't do that. And they say, well, wait a minute, you let Mr. Kaido do a, a use in that category, you specifically approved that use, well, why can't I do it? So I guess those are concerns.
Yeah, the only other option really is to. And I explained this to Mr. Kito, is to not only rezone the property, but then add the land use to segregated business. Because the only place that we allow this type of land use is along the highway, US 41.
Well, segregated business would probably be worse for the adjoining-
Sales, yeah. I mean, you're not-
-property, because you, you'd get a more, you could have a more heavy industrial use then.
That's correct.
That had nothing to do with his business.
It was explained to both Mr. Tolkstorf and Mr. Kito that this, this would be a challenge to, you know, make happen.
Okay. Well, I mean, so, you know, I'm just, I just want to talk to you about these points. So, the points that I bring up, does it cause you any concern, or?
They're valid concerns, yes.
But I mean, given-
Most of the township is zoned resource production.
Okay. But given what I said, are you still confident in your recommendation that this should happen?
Well, I wish it was just this property, but clearly you bring up to the point that it's not, and if we could maybe somehow single out these, the vehicle sales, service, supply and repair into different categories as a result of our master plan update, as a result of our forthcoming zoning rewrite, which will come after the master plan update, then I think we have something to work with. But I explained to them that this property all of a sudden has become available, and there's been desires expressed to develop the property. Unfortunately, we're not zoned correctly, uh, for some of the things that you want to do. So, you request to have this, uh, heard at a public hearing, and the planning commission has to make a decision on it.
Well, the other thing that I, I look at in my notes here, um, with respect to the, oh, let's see, you, you were, you gave us all the criteria, the fact-finding criteria here.
Yes.
So, if we go just... I mean, if we look at Paragraph Eight, that one of the, uh, or if you look at the, uh, let's just go to B. Uh, "The questions to be considered by the planning commission relative to a petition for a zoning change or amendment shall include but are not limited to the following." And it says "shall include," and one of the things that shall include is Paragraph, Subparagraph Eight, "Has an environmental impact assessment or statement been submitted?" And I, I didn't see anything in the packet about an environmental impact statement or assessment.
Right. No, one wasn't submitted.
Okay. Well, is that a disqualifying factor, in your opinion, for this permit request? Or this, for this zoning petition?
Did Mr. Taylor submit, uh, an environmental assessment? On the 420 Brickyard Road rezoning, map rezoning? I mean, normally what would happen, and maybe that's an old provision, because if somebody buys the property, then they're required to abide by our stormwater ordinance. They would do a Phase One likely on the property. But that, no, that hasn't been submitted to us.
Okay. I remember from the, watching the YouTube video, that there was mention of a small wetland area there. Is that going to be impacted?
By the development? No, it's, it's not supposed to be.
Well, I mean, it's less than five acres, so what?
What's less than five? Oh, wetland is-
The wetland area, yeah.
Uh, that hasn't been delineated, to my understanding. I mean, we can see it on, you clearly see where the wetland is just by the vegetation, but I don't think that the development would be impacting that.
But we don't know, because we don't have an environmental impact statement or assessment.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, would the business access off 550?
No. To my knowledge, we're coming off-
So, would they would drive across wetlands? Wetland drive permits, that kind of stuff?
No. There's an area to the west and south of the property that's accessible and dry.
All right. Well, you know, to, to pick up where Denny was going, and I'm going to go in a bit of a different direction here. It seems like that we've had two of these zoning issues. One that was the spot zoning that we did recently, and that, to me, was improper because it was spot zoning, but it was also improper because it was, it was purely for a financial gain. Okay? I mean, the purchaser, Penn Inc., bought it as residential property. That's fair. There's a home on it. Now, because he has the chance to sell it, but for a commercial purpose and make additional money, he has asked for a spot zoning for that. Again, I voted no on that, and I understand we're going to have another hearing on that. Is that correct?
Um, aside from this particular agenda item tonight, yes, we are.
Okay. So, anyway, what I'm, what I'm seeing with this, Article Two, is this property was purchased as resource production, and they're asking for us to go through something that is completely foreign to a resource production zoning, to putting vehicle sales, yada, 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 for a financial gain. That's what I'm seeing here. I mean, they could, they could market it as, what it's zoned as, resource production, or either, you know, why aren't, why aren't we doing spot zoning for this? I don't, I don't understand that. I mean, if we're, if we're going to do spot zoning for a little dinky, dinky little parcel that's over by Lowe's, why isn't spot zoning the way to go for something like this, if, if there's nothing wrong with spot zoning?
Spot zoning is illegal in the state-
Isn't that what we're doing for, for Penn Inc.?
Um, there is, there's development district abutting.
Okay. And so, we're going to do a zoning for, what, a two-acre parcel? Why don't we do 50 acres there? Because that's all abutting.
I explained to both the applicants that if they wanted to take an avenue to try to make this work, this would be the avenue. I wasn't in support of rezoning the property, because I don't think that was the right way to go. We haven't had a chance to look at this property from a land use standpoint. Um, and they put together an application. Obviously, they went further than that with the purchase agreement and other issues. That's not really our purview. Um, the land use is not permitted, um, as the zoning exists currently.
Well, in my opinion, this is different from Mr. Taylor's public hearing, because this, this is for text amendment change for like the zoning and-
Correct. Not a map amendment.
Special permit.
But it is an amendment to the ordinance, and I think Denny's point is well received. You have thousands of acres in the township that are zoned resource production. So, to just say, we're going to make, you know, that land use, a special land use covering resource production, it's a challenge, and I explained that to them.
And, and I think too, if somebody else has some resource production property along 510, 550, and they said, "Hey, you allowed them to do that. I want to have, I want to be able to sell this for an additional, for more value, and make the property more valuable for me. Why don't we zone it for X, Y, and Z? You did it for these folks. Why don't we just do zoning amendments and, or special use permits all up and down 550, given whatever those people could sell the property for?" That's, that could be the way, that's the, your approach to this. So, it wouldn't be spot zoning. Just do a, a, a special use permit for it. Zoning amendment text, but, and then so the next guy that has more valuable, more, it'd be more valuable for him to have, say, "Oh, I don't know, some, some zoning that isn't fit that district or used that fits that district," but he can make more money. So, should we do that up and down the road everywhere? People want to make more money?
Well, so, Jason, you said this was one way it could be done?
But I didn't say it was-
The only way.
Right.
So, um-
There was a, maybe, I don't know how anxious or how much time you have to work with your current deal, Tony, but, you know, the township is going through a process of looking at, you know, relooking at. Every five years, we do this. And all of a sudden, this property is like on our radar, not just for you, but for other land uses in the area. But if we had some time to work through this and further delineate the area, um, and come up with some, you know, I explained to you that I think that it could work there. The zoning doesn't support it, but I do think that it could assimilate harmoniously in that location. It makes sense. Does it make sense broad brush across the entire zoning district? I don't think it does. But the township planning commission is going to go through a process where we look at things that have changed in the last five years, and this property is certainly one of them. Um, is there the ability to extract some gravel? Uh, yes, the zoning does support that. Is there the ability to have some ancillary, similar commercial development potentially along this, uh, you know, the former Fly Ash Road, perhaps? There's a, I think there's an opportunity to do residential, um, you know, depending upon what Mr. Storey wants to do with the property, and we've had those conversations. Um, if, if there was a way for us to have some time and to go through that process, and to maybe come back at the same time next year, we'd probably be in a much better position to have some of those land uses further delineated, have the land itself further delineated from a land use standpoint, and be able to move forward in a different direction. It doesn't sound like the planning commission is supportive of, uh, what's being proposed, and I can understand why. And I explained to both of you that it would be a challenge, um, or that it would be challenged. But we are in, you know, we try to help people that want to invest in the community, and, um, you know, we don't want to see Mr. Kito move over to Nagani Township, and we don't want to see him move out to Chocolate Township. We'd like to keep his talent and his business in our community. So, I guess in, in essence, um, if it's not supported this evening by the planning commission, um, you know, an app, an application, I believe, for, or maybe that's a special use permit, but, um, you know, typically you'd have to wait one year to reapply, which may coincide with things that we need to do on our end to catch up with the fact that this property, which was unavailable for 60, 70 years, from a land use development standpoint, because it was held by a large landowner, and now it's been broken up and, you know, it's, it's changed hands to somebody that would like to do it, and now we have a public road, not a private road. Um, you know, that, that changes things for us. So...
I just found, I just found the, I just found the future land use for resource production, uh, it was, uh, Chapter Eight, page six. It says, uh, it talks about how a large portion of the Marquette Township is forest land devoted to timber harvests and natural resource production. Under the current ordinance, and I, and I, I didn't see this, but I mean, this is what it says in our master plan, under the current ordinance, "This district allows single-family residential development on one acre plots as a special use with a requirement that the lots front a county road." And then it says, it talks about how small lots fragment large tracts of land, et cetera, et cetera. So, it says here, "It's recommended that this provision be changed in the resource production district to allow residential development on five acre, five acre lots as a special use, only when done as a subdivision development or conservation subdivision, uh, and the property has frontage or access on all season county road. Overall, density will remain low. The residential parcel will be clustered and impact reduced." So, it looks like even our old master plan was thinking of the future use for this resource production as something different than resource production. So, I mean, to your point is, it could maybe say some, uh, it could also be used for, you know, some type of commercial, mixed use, I guess, would be it. I, I don't know, but, but currently, it doesn't-
Essentially. It's like the old neighborhood store. It's like the spot on the east side of Marquette, you know?
Yeah. Or the garage-
We'll go through this with the housing discussion too, because right now, we have exclusively single-family residential zoning, but from what the experts are telling us, we should allow duplexes and multifamily in some areas-
Right.
-that are currently zoned single-family, and that's one of the things that affects affordability. So, yeah, there's many discussions to be had. Um, this one in particular is, is a tough one, um, in that, as much as I wish I could just wave my wand and say, "Tony, you know, get after it," um, we have rules that we have to abide by, and we have, I'm hired to administer the zoning ordinance, um, that we have and abide by the master plan, and, um, you know, it's, it's a tough, tough sledding with this.
Jason, is it okay to say anything?
I don't think the public hearing's been opened yet.
Okay.
I mean, so is there any other, follow up on Linda said, is there any other way to massage this to make it work?
No, because if you did, that would be spot zoning.
Okay.
Can we do a P O D?
I'm sorry. What'd you say, Bethany?
No.
P O D?
For not really.
Or apply for a P O D?
I guess, I don't know. I haven't, I haven't explored that, but I think P O D's are more for residential.
Well, the gravel pit is allowed in there.
It's an extractive. You're right. It's like logging. But, you know, in my opinion, Tony's business supports that, the extractive business, because transportation is how everything happens.
What supports the business is because he's supporting the gravel pit trucks to run.
Any of the heavy hauls, yeah. Logging trucks. I mean, he's a diesel specialist.
And how long would it normally take if, I mean, this is a three-month period. It has to go to the county, has to come back to the township board.
It's not that, it's not quite that long, Linda. Um, the-
County's fast.
Planning commission, the county planning commission meets the first week of every month, and we have a good relationship with the county. So, if we get something to them, even after the second meeting of the month, we could still typically get it on their planning commission agenda, and they send a letter back to us, and then it goes to the board. Um, I, I don't, I don't know what a rezoning would be. The only, the other thing that we could do is define and single out Diesel Mechanic Shop. Put it into the ordinance and decide whether or not to allow it, uh, in the resource production zoning district by special use, or twofold, uh, if the applicant was willing to do so, perhaps, no, you can't. There's, there's residential abutting that property to the north, and just on the south side of the tracts, there are some homes along, kind of over 550 there too. So, let's say zoning that, um, to segregated business or industrial, and then adding the land use to that. I mean, that's, it's just a complicated situation.
Ken, well, let me ask you a question. So, you, what you said here is, um... Singling out his, or being more specific about the use that he wants to make of this. Okay? So, in other words, instead of a zoning text amendment to include vehicle sales, service, repairs, parts and supplies as a special land use, could there be a vote tonight to amend this on its face with the petitioner's consent to include, uh, a more specific description just of his business that wouldn't have such a broad category?
In my opinion, that doesn't pass the-
Doesn't pass the sma-
-spot zoning's test.
Yeah, but this, but here's what bothered me. This whole area, this whole designation, vehicle sales, service, repairs, parts and supplies, isn't defined anywhere, anywhere. It's mentioned once, but it's not defined anywhere. It's mentioned once in, uh-
Well, okay, let's, let's stay on that track for a minute. So, again, though, if you, if we were to just define diesel repair shop, which I'm sure we could do, um-
Well, auto and diesel repair shop, because he does autos as well, not just, he does gas fire, not, not just-
Right. But the problem with that, then, is that you're still allowing that land use- Right. But the problem with that then is that you're still allowing that land use by special use in anywhere in the resource production district.
I, I understand and agree with what you're both saying, but then at the same time, the intensity of the gravel pit, to me, is way higher than the intensity of a auto repair shop. Right? I mean, that would probably be like a five.
Actually, it is a five. His, what they want here is.
Auto repair shops a five also?
It's, well, yeah, it's defined as a five.
How can it be if it's not defined?
It's, it's not defined, but it's referenced.
It's listed in the.
It's listed, but it's never defined.
So it's listed and there's a
Here, show you.
Land intensity of five on it then?
Yeah.
The problem is that extraction of earth products as a land use is allowable in the resource production district.
Right. I understand that too.
Yeah, I mean.
But it seems, it just seems like there's way more involved to extracting gravel out of there
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
Than there is to repair a truck on a, on a lot. So, I mean, if you, if you're gonna let the gravel pit go in there with all that stuff going on, but yet say you can't repair the trucks that are working over there, that doesn't make sense, but I still agree with what you guys are saying, so it's.
I think I get hung up on the vehicle sales, parts and supplies part of it, like we don't want the stores, the parts and supplies, we don't want the sales, but the service and repairs, we all seem to agree on.
Like I said, you know, we're getting proposals from businesses that want to develop in the township. We would love to retain his talents in the township. Is, is there any way that, you know, you can work with us to have some more time to?
I speak? Are you asking me a question, or?
He's the chairperson, yeah.
We'll open up the public hearing in a minute as soon as we're.
I just thought he was asking me a question, so.
Well, I kinda am.
So now I have to remember this, but anyways.
Yeah, no, I mean, we always try to have a conversation, that's what it's all about. It's not like us against you or you against us or anything like that. We're trying to have a conversation. But, I mean, is there, is this something, Tony, worth, like, you know, having us catch up with our land use to, to make this happen, or, or at least present it in a more acceptable way?
Well.
Come on up.
Okay. Well, I don't know all the legal ways that you guys have to write words down and stuff, but I am not planning on selling any vehicles on this property. And as far as what I'm gathering, as you guys are thinking like a Napa store or something being there, I'm, I'm a Napa auto care facility right now. The only parts that I sell are parts that are brought to me. I do stock certain things, but it, it's not going to be like a resale store where you guys could walk in off the street and buy a set of brake pads from me.
I don't think we were worried about you doing it. I think we were just saying if we allow that use, then other people can open up, sell cars and stuff like that, not just, not you. We understand yours.
Yeah, 'cause, you know, this is foreign to me because I'm, I'm a mechanic, you know. Just like, you know, cars are foreign to you guys, you know, it's.
So this is just a, a quick picture of, this green area is what is zone resource production. So if we were to decide on this tonight and the planning commission supported this land use type on this property, that means all of the other green in the township, I don't even know if we have any thing else that represents that more.
Well, here.
Obviously, the balance of the community.
Here's the map.
To the north, yeah.
Here's the map, you can take a look at it.
So the concern is if you allow your land use to go on this little piece down here, I mean, it really opens up a can of worms. And so if we had some time.
Has no road.
But yet he can do it across the street.
But he's in across the street, and he's not even, he's, he's got a use that's less intense than the district you're already in. So it's kind of ironic, and I, I mean, nobody's, I don't know.
Right, but I visited his shop. The shop is antiquated. It's probably not very sound, perhaps in the winter. You know, I'm sure there's, and I don't want to speak for Tony, but there's, he wants to improve, you know, his livelihood and his business. And the existing shop, I believe, has been there for a number of years, and it's just kind of changed hands and.
So it's just grandfathered in.
And it's been grandfathered in forever.
Which, which is potentially.
Grandfathered across the street?
When, if, if we did pass this and it had to go to the county, do they require a, a public hearing for that then also?
They don't. They just review the recommendation coming from the planning commission.
They change anything, you know, themselves?
No, they would just make a recommendation back to us, and rarely do they have anything much to say. Sometimes they have over the course of the years, but, you know, mostly it's supported, and it's kind of like the, you know, the states against the, the country, if you will, about, you know, we'll let the states make those decisions, or the township make the decision, but.
But then it would, if, if they said okay, then it would go to the township board?
Yeah.
And would that require a public hearing?
They, the board can have a public hearing if they choose to, they do not have to. They would have a first and a second reading.
Is there anything they can change, like can they just change this to vehicle sales or, or sales or repair?
Just the parcel?
No, the, the. Description.
The description.
Tough questions for you tonight, Jason.
Well, it is. Every piece of property is challenging. They all have their own unique challenges. And I can't think of a better place for your business to be located, quite honestly. You're safely off of 550, you have some property to work with, you have a natural buffer between yourself and the residences there. You have great access on a heavy haul route for those trucks. But the ordinance doesn't support it right, as it is right now. So what I'm asking you and Mr. Tolxdorf is that if there's a chance to give us, you know, sixty days to come up with some kind of, you know, there's one other property that we have a conditional rezoning on, and that would be the Moose Lodge, the former Moose Lodge, which is now
Gilbert's.
Which is now Bow Shamps Plumbing and Heating, okay? Bow Shamps and Gilbert's, yeah, together. Of course, that's in a residentially zoned area, but what are you going to do with that building? It's not going to be a house, so there's a conditional rezoning tool that we have too. But I didn't, I guess, I didn't consider that, but it's kind of a stretch. I mean, if we had more time, we might be able to come up with something that would assist you in a more, because I don't want you to get to the point, because you're going to make a significant investment, we already talked about this, I mean, a large investment. To have you someday wanting to sell that property and retire and then have these impediments on the property, like, well, did you get proper zoning approval and this and that, and, that's never my goal. My goal is to always have things locked tight so that you have wonderful development and you have something that's valuable and that you can convey at will on the market. So is that something that you guys would entertain?
Are we getting, I mean, should we consider having a vote on this and see how the vote goes?
Sure.
We gotta open it up to.
Oh, we have to have the public hearing first, but what, what about if you had something written up somehow? Were, if you had a repair service that just worked on anything that is in resource production, like any of the equipment that is used in resource production? That you could repair that?
Well, that would potentially limit his.
That would limit his business.
Well, yeah. But I mean, you could, that's kind of a broad category, you know, what, what could be used in resource production, but I'm just saying, kind of a way to tie it into being a, a use for resource production.
I appreciate your thought. I still think it's outside of what would be, what could be a lot cleaner.
Can I ask, Mr., I don't question. Have you purchased the property already?
I have not.
Have not, okay. I mean, we, the township just renewed with, with somebody who wants to buy some township property, just renewed an option to purchase. The first option to purchase was a year for the sum of one dollar. So that, that piece of property was kept off the market for a year for a small amount of money. I don't know, I'm not trying to give you advice what to do, but that's something you could consider, I guess. To give time. I mean, is it, is it, is it like, if you don't, if you don't sign the paper, you're going to lose the chance?
Most likely. Our purchase agreement is contingent on a lot of factors, and one of them is being, you know, zoning approval to be able to do my business on there, because for me to buy that piece of property and only be able to harvest the trees and the gravel, I, that's not what I do, so.
Right.
You know, it'd be, you know, counterproductive for me to buy this piece of property if I weren't able to put my business on there. You know, because I wouldn't even, I, I wouldn't even buy it to sit on it, to sell it later for a profit, you know, that's not.
Right.
You know.
What was the, can you disclose what the purchase price? Well, okay.
Two fifty.
Two fifty for that twenty acres?
Yeah.
No, that's a substantial amount of money, huh?
It's without a building.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
And I have not moved forward with some other things that I would have to, as far as, you know, you talk about environmental impact, and I don't know how all that works, but I've talked with a few of my contractor customers and, and friends about how to go about all of building on there, and they've kind of walked me through some things and offered help and advice and whatever, you know, so, but I can't get the approval from the bank or anything like that until I get approval from you guys, you know, so. So that's where I'm at right now with it. But it sounds like with the lending institution that I'm talking with, that there wouldn't be much of an issue to be able to purchase this piece of property. So going through all this work wouldn't be for nothing. But that's where I'm at with it right now. I'm just, currently where I'm at, I've kind of outgrown, outgrown the space, and I need more employees because the business has just, you know, turned out pretty good. And like you said, you can't see it from the road.
You can't.
I have no sign. I don't advertise. Everything's word of mouth.
Yeah, I mean, I, I drove halfway through just to, just to be sure that this was the shop. And your lot was full of customers, so I know you've got a good business going there, you know.
What about if, can, could we pass this with conditions? To send it to the county and to the township board?
I, I guess that depends. I mean, the, the public hearing notice was pretty specific. And because it's a zoning text amendment, it didn't require notification of people within three hundred feet. It just required an advertisement in the newspaper. As opposed to when he goes to develop the site and it's a special use, then neighbors within three hundred feet will be notified, and we'd likely have more people here. So that's another challenge. Yeah, the public hearing was pretty specific.
So if you wanted to say that, or, okay, if we, if we change it, if I just change that to a recommendation to the township board that you change the definition to just repair, not have the other stuff in there?
I, I still think it defeats the other planning commissioners' concerns in that you opened it up, the entire resource production zoning district up for.
I understand that, but I. That and, and requests for who knows what. I want to have this business on my resource production along 550. I want to have this type of business. I want to have this type of business. You granted it to them, why can't I get it? And I think that's the can of worms we're going to open up.
Yeah, and that's the challenge that I tried to explain to Mr. Tolxdorf, is that we understand that you want to get hot on this stuff, but that we haven't had a chance to look at this particular area because it hasn't been sold in many years, and, you know, the previous owner didn't have the same desires as the new owner does.
So, so can we change some of the land on the Fly Ash Road out of being resource development?
Resource production?
Right. Can't we, can't we take?
That requires a, that requires a, another public hearing, a different public hearing.
Right, right, but that is an option.
Yeah, you could create a swath.
Which is what forty-one is.
Well, yeah, not, and from a planner's perspective, not the most ideal.
Well, I'm not saying it was an idea.
Scenario as far as land use goes.
But it is what happened.
Strip development, yeah.
Since that is kind of more industrial, could you just kind of do that all along the road and change it to?
Yeah, I think you can.
Segregated business, if that allows for it in there, or?
What are the choices we have?
I don't think that would be good, segregated business, because that would, that would even be a higher and more intense impactful use, but I mean.
There are some choices though, right?
There are some.
There are some choices to redo it. It's going to happen along that road, that something's going to happen.
The development along that road.
Right. Yeah, it's a nice road.
What, what was the conditional zoning thing that you mentioned, Jason?
Essentially, it's, if I issue a zoning permit, it travels with the property. A conditional rezoning's different. You sign some agreements that we both agree on as far as the use, what you're going to build on it, maybe your hours of operation. As soon as you sell that property, that goes away. So it expires. Unlike a normal zoning, when you establish a land use, it stays with the property. When Bow Shamps Plumbing and Heating is done with the Moose Lodge, the former Moose Lodge, that goes away too, and they'll start over from scratch. So it is an option, but I would, I would need some time to.
But is that actually a, that is actually a rezoning, so it's a change to the zoning map?
It is, yeah. We have one, one area that's like, it's a hash mark on the map. It's hard to see probably, but it's just, you know, it's one little parcel of.
And, and if, if that, if you did that, could the rezoning be done to a tailored description? Rather than something like this broad vehicle sales and so forth?
Well, it wouldn't matter if it was just on that property, and that's what it would be. It would be conditionally rezoning just that property.
Just that twenty acres?
Parcel, just the parcel.
Oh, and so, and that would be a delay of about, what, thirty days, sixty days?
Maybe forty-five. I, I don't believe our, legal counsel's a big fan of those, so I would have to take a look at it.
But if we, if we, like, let's just say we, so we notice up a public hearing tonight, but let's just say we defer a vote on this until you can, that way it doesn't necessarily trigger the one year, then, I, I don't know, I'm talking out loud.
Understood.
Rather than take a vote, we just, we just vote to defer it to give a chance for you to explore this other option?
I don't know if you're following us or not, but we're trying to figure out if there's some way we can get you to do this.
I'm, I'm.
You know, legally and, you know, without causing any problems in the rest of the resource production, so.
I'm following.
Yeah, we're trying to figure it out, but.
Yeah, I give, I need a couple minutes here to just look something up. One of the things Eric would be under, first of all, figure out if the zoning map or text amendment is denied in the same way that is, like a condition. If there's a timeframe to the application. If there's a timeframe to the application. So the one year, if it's denied, the one year provision isn't in there, it's only for special use permit?
Oh, okay, so it doesn't apply anyway?
Correct.
So I'm, and I'm looking at Article twelve, conditional rezoning, um, so it says that some instances it be in the best interest of the ch- township as well as advantageous properties, property owners seeking to change in zoning boundaries, there's certain conditions to be proposed as part of a quest. So are we, is a conditional rezoning, uh, only applicable to changing a boundary between two zoning areas, or is it actually, we can actually, 'cause there'd be no, there'd be no adjacent zoning area?
To that, no.
I don't know, it's, yeah.
Okay, let me explain this to you, okay? So a conditional rezoning, it is recognized that there are certain instances, like this one, where it would be in the best interests of the township as well as the advantages to the property owner seeking a change in a zoning boundary. If change, uh, if certain conditions could be proposed by the property owner as part of a request for rezoning, it is the intent of this section to provide a procedure consistent with provisions of Section four oh five of the Zoning Enabling Act as amended, by which an owner seeking a rezoning may voluntarily propose conditions regarding the use and/or development as, uh, of land as part of a rezoning request. And it says, "An owner of land may voluntarily offer in writing conditions relating to the use and/or the development of the land which the rezoning is requested. The offers shall be made at the time of the application for the rezoning is filed." Um, the required application and procedure for considering a rezoning request with the conditions shall be at the same time considering rezoning request made without any offers or conditions except as modified by the requirements of this section. Um, I would need to drill into this more to see if that's applicable or not. But certainly, the former Moose Lodge, now, um, um.
Bochamp's.
Now Bochamp's Plumbing and Heating and Gilbert's is not a residential use. So it worked in that instance. You have a use that is completely foreign and not allowed in rural residential, which is situated in rural residential by way of a conditional rezoning. So that may be the avenue to go, um, staff would request, uh, you know, a bit of time to work through that, but that may be the avenue to take.
Does that, uh, does the completion or achievement of that conditional rezoning then create an avenue for others in that general land district to do some of the things?
It does, yes, of course.
It does.
Anybody that gets this document has the ability, and that owns property could potentially take advantage of a, of a conditional rezoning.
And, and, I mean, so, I mean, there is a, so the argument is that if, if you did it for him, you can do it for us?
Yes, but we, I mean, we've only had one in thirteen.
So conditional, to a different zoning district, is that what I'm hearing? Conditional rezoning would be rezoning to a different district?
By way of allowing a use that you wouldn't normally perhaps allow.
And what district would that be?
I don't know, Steve, because I haven't had the chance to review this.
What, what, what district allows, uh, uh, Fry Chevrolet or whatever the Chevy.
General Business.
And that would have to be general business, right?
Or development districts, um.
Yeah, so it'd be, it'd be a conditional district change, not a, not a conditional special use in a, 'cause it's changed zoning. Not can change special use.
Well, does it get rezoned if you have the, like, with, with, with Gilbert's, did that get technically rezoned then?
Effectively, yes.
Okay.
But it, but it has a sunset due.
So then, but that wasn't considered spot zoning though?
Correct.
So then, if we did this for this property, that wouldn't be considered spot zoning either then?
That's correct.
Well, there's nothing existing on that property that, that is, that is, that is wrong in that district. That's the problem with Gilbert's, it's the wrong, wrong, wrong use in that district. There's no use in this district that's wrong. There's no use in, there's no use on that parcel in resource production that is incorrect at this point. But there was on a Gilbert parcel, so it's apples and oranges, they, they're meaningless, they're.
We allow it across the street, so.
What's that?
We allow it across the street.
What's that?
To do repairs. For this one, even though there's nothing wrong with this.
Yeah, that was grandfathered in.
Right, but I'm just saying it was.
Well, it's not allowed.
I mean, but, yeah, if that was the, if that parcel we were dealing with, then, yeah. I mean, if that was, if that was his, the parcel that he has his building on, that was out of, out of the compliance with the district that it was in, then we could do that for that parcel, but not a complete vacant parcel. That's not, that's not applicable to this parcel.
I don't understand. If we're selling the parcel that he's actually working at right now and we want it to, conditional.
It's got complicated, isn't it?
When you get in the weeds, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there's a lot of this.
Chevy dealership right up here.
Do we have to vote on it?
Car lot right over here.
Because we're asking them to come to decisions without enough time to look at stuff. You know, it's easy to make the wrong answer back when you only have a few minutes to be looking at stuff. I mean, I would prefer to wait and give people adequate time to investigate.
That's what I'm saying, can we defer judgment?
Right, that's what I'm, yes, I agree. I, I don't know that we can, I thought one time they told me no, that we had to vote.
No, I, I think you, you can't defer it, but you can, what was the wording on that, Jason? You can postpone it?
Yeah.
You can't say defer it, you have to say postpone, right?
Postpone a decision on this?
So why don't we just, yeah, let's just open up the public hearing, we'll go through all the formalities of it and then just do what we want to do. Okay, so we'll open the public hearing at eight nineteen.
Anyone wishing to speak can come forward. I don't want to open up a whole ball of wax and worms here, but.
I mean, technically speaking, the property itself, um, is only twenty and a half acres and based on your zoning, in order to be in resource production, that property tax ID parcel number must have a minimum of forty acres, which kind of follows the same rules and laws as the Commercial Forest Act does in Michigan. They require you, you have to have a minimum of forty acres to be in commercial forest. If you have thirty-nine, they don't allow you in it. And I'm wondering, does that change anything since this is only twenty and a half acres? But I don't think it was ever picked up on, because it must've been bought at a different time, fifty, sixty years ago, by We Energy.
Right.
So if it's, if it's, it's not even meeting code, it's not meeting, uh.
Yeah, but it's, it's a legal non-conforming parcel, which means it can't be developed, as long as it abides by the current setbacks.
Nobody meaning it can't be in resource production zoning as of today. 'Cause that separate property tax ID number only shows twenty and a half acres.
It's zone resource production.
Right, it doesn't meet your code for having a minimum of forty acres.
It's not part of the Commercial Forest Act.
No, nothing to do, but that's the, but it does go against your zoning.
It's a legal non-conforming parcel.
In, in your zoning, 'cause it doesn't meet forty acres.
It's legal, but it's non-conforming.
It's non-conforming.
That's like you can have, uh, 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 lots in Trowbridge that are supposed, you know, new residential lots have to be a hundred feet wide, but there are fifty-foot wide, wide lots in, in Trowbridge. It's still a residential lot, it's just legal, but it's non-conforming to the current zoning. Same thing with this parcel, legal, but non-conforming to current zoning.
So if it's non-conforming, would that make it easier to change it to general business or something like that?
General business wouldn't work here because that, that would be effectively spot zoning in this case, so there's no general business anywhere around.
So I just thought maybe the parcel size could help, you know, to get.
Yeah, I mean, we're trying to work with you, um, I think the planning commission is also supportive of what's being proposed. What is, uh, a conundrum is how to get it done.
About getting ourselves, opening up a can of worms for ourselves.
Right, that's understandable.
You know, I, I, I think it's a great place for that, for business. I think it's a fabulous place, but we don't, we don't want to, like, you know, down the road go, oh my God, we should have never done that, because now look what we have to deal with.
Right. I just want to throw it out there, I mean, you guys are the experts as far as this way approach it, but.
Yeah, no, I told you from the beginning, we're gonna do what we can to assist you, and that's the way we work. I mean, we've been doing this for quite a while. But this one's a little bit more challenging, um, again, in that we just really haven't had the chance. Maybe, maybe throughout this master planning, uh, process, there's a new zoning district that comes out of it.
Right.
Um, or different, different land uses allowed in different districts. Maybe we remove, uh, resource production from that entire area that, that Mr. Story bought. Um, or maybe we just leave that one parcel that he wants to develop, uh, as a gravel pit. Maybe we leave that one research production and change the others around it. So we just haven't had that chance yet because this property's been owned by the same entity for so long, um, and that's been a private road for so long. Now all of a sudden, the township is kind of behind the eight ball a bit because we have to come up, uh, and meet with the demands of the new property owners without having gone through any sort of, uh, land use process with it.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, anyone else wishing to speak? Tony, did you want to say anything more?
I'm not smart enough for all of this.
All right.
I understand what you guys are saying and I understand that it's a process and stuff. As far as questions, I don't really have any, um, but, you know, like, Mr. McCarthy said earlier, he stopped in to see, you know, stuff, I, you said you've driven in there. Um, you know, if you guys want to just pop in one day between eight and five, you know, go for it. And, I mean, I know that's not gonna change how this goes, but just to see kind of what my idea of.
Oh, sure, thank you, yeah. Well, you've got a good reputation throughout the community, I know that already from other people I've talked to and, you know, so it's.
It's just, it's a land usage.
Yeah, purely, purely a land use.
Okay, so there's no one else wishing to speak? So we'll close the public hearing at eight twenty-four. And we'll discuss it some more, or if there's any more questions, or we can make a motion to do whatever.
Do we think that a, a motion to postpone a decision on this would be an appropriate placeholder for it to, without, you know, and then?
The problem I have with that is I think you need to postpone to a specific date. Um, whereas if you denied the request.
Okay.
And as a friendly amendment to the denial, requested that staff explore the conditional rezoning option, um, as a means to accommodate the applicant, that may be something that would, um, you know, we could, we could jump on that right away.
So you're saying you think the more procedurally proper way would be to deny the request with a recommendation to the planning staff, that the planning staff.
Explore other options.
Other options to.
Accommodate.
Accommodate.
With a deadline, without a deadline?
I don't think we need a deadline, I mean, it's, either way, it's gonna take a public hearing, it's gonna be another public hearing. Anytime we adjust the ordinance or adjust the map, it's gonna be a public hearing.
So we don't want to put a date on it just because you don't know how long it's gonna take and we don't want to have to?
No, and we may be able to get it done faster than the date that you provide, so.
I make a motion that the request for a zoning text amendment be denied with a recommendation to the planning commission staff, to the zoning administrator, that alternative means, uh, of granting, uh, the need of the petitioner be addressed.
I'll second that.
Okay. And any more discussion? Roll call vote again then, Steve Hakenin?
Yes.
Kenny Ferraro?
Okay, that's, so, I, we're, we're, when he just said yes, that's, that's a yes to deny, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Your motion.
Yes, right, yes.
Professor Cody?
Yes.
My name's Wolf.
Oh.
Uh, Jim Johnson said yes.
So Mount Apache's four to one. And if you don't mind, I would like to meet with you in the vestibule, Eric's gonna carry on with, uh.
Hey, well, Eric, you're probably gonna do this C anyway, so we'll just keep going. Uh, six C, special use permit, public hearing request. Proposed short-term rental land used to be located on a property located within the urban residential zoning district. Parcel tax ID is five-two-zero-eight, four-two-zero-zero-five-zero-zero. Applicant is Carl Redmer, nineteen forty-two Orchard Street in Marquette.
Staff has received a complete application for a special use permit for a short-term rental at the, uh, subject address, which is nineteen forty-two Orchard. The applicant recently acquired, recently acquired the property. He has a child who attends Northern Michigan University. Um, and according to the narrative, is their intention to have that, the student live in the property during the school year and then rent it out during the summer months. Um, and then, kind of more long-term, they'll move up here permanently in that home. Um, again, that's kind of beside the point. Um, staff has received a complete application. Uh, as you can see here, the location is marked by the star, the red star down in the right-hand corner, kind of where Bancroft and Mieske meet. Uh, it is on Orchard Street there. Um, there's a little bit clearer picture, gold star showing the proposed location, green dots showing the existing approved short-term rental locations. Um, again, really, nothing more to add at this point. Uh, the applicant does live out of the area, so I do know they are planning on attending the public hearing meeting, uh, assuming you do schedule it tonight. And staff would recommend that it be scheduled for the regular meeting on Wednesday, May eighth, twenty twenty-four at seven P.M.
I don't know if any of you have driven by there, but it's kind of a pretty rough property. It's, um.
Well, they would need to fix it up to code to, for people to have the short term.
Like on the inside, if it looks kind of rough on the outside.
So doesn't the fire marshal have to go through and approve the?
Yeah.
Electric, do they approve electric, what do they?
Well, I, I, I think they go through their.
It's a fire code.
Right, fire code, which includes, I mean, if there's exposed wires, they're not gonna pass it as per fire code and things like that. But as long as it meets that baseline health, safety.
Yeah.
Requirements. And that inspection is completed, again, assuming it's approved or for any short-term rental, those inspections are completed after approval. We don't require that those be completed before consideration.
So you think if somebody was to buy it, to live in it, they would fix it up more?
Right.
I mean, is that your?
Again, this is the applicant's narrative, but they do state that they intend to conduct both cosmetic and, I forget their exact language, structural upgrades, or, again, I forget what exactly they say, but they say they do intend on fixing it up.
Well, I guess the issue I have with it is, um.
I guess the issue I have with it is, you know, people, the people don't live here. And I know we can probably let this all be discussed at the public hearing, but, you know, do we even want to schedule these things? You know, if the, if the owners come out of town, they're renting to college kids right now? Or letting their college students age on living it?
Do we have any, you know, maybe, I, I don't think we have any requirements before we schedule a public hearing. We don't, we don't say they have to do certain things.
Granted that beyond submitting a complete application and the fee, no.
But we can say no if we decided that it, I mean, how can, what can we say no because it looks like a mess? I mean, I don't know.
Uh, there was one that we actually did that.
Didn't we say they had to fix it before we would say yes?
No.
You just said no.
But you had a public hearing first.
It was a well.
Well, but there was another one on South Vandenburg that had some property issues or maybe parties or something, it was a number of years ago, it was. Maybe I'm mistaken, but.
Do you know where the owner actually lives?
Grand Rapids, as I understand it.
You don't have to put that on your application?
They stated in the narrative.
Nineteen forty-two Orchard Street.
No, where do they live?
Right, that's, they included nineteen forty-two Orchard as their applicant address, but in the narrative, which is.
Is they travel to the area from Grand Rapids, okay.
Right, I, okay, so maybe I, I'm assuming Grand Rapids, but that's where I saw Grand Rapids.
Okay.
Well, their son is going to live there.
Right.
So unless they want to let their son get bit by rats, I mean, I'm assuming they're going to have some, somewhere.
That could be a condition of approval, right, a special use permit?
That he gets bitten by rats?
No.
No, 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 I meant the cleaning up of the prospect.
Well, you know, and I think speaking to that, I know this can all be discussed at the public hearing also, but, you know, maybe we can put a limit as to how many people can live there or rent from there. Because that's a, that's a tiny house and it's in a pretty small area for neighbors and, you know, like just kind of worry about college kids living there and.
Isn't it by bedroom? Aren't you only allowed to have so many non-related people living in a apartment?
Yeah, it's four.
Four non-related?
Rooming house is more than four.
This isn't a rooming house, though.
No, but I, I mean, there's a lot of things we can do with these short-term rentals now, you know, with.
Oh, right.
And not to, not to jump ahead here, but I think some of this discussion may be appropriate
for the next agenda item, which has been kind of a placeholder on our agendas for a few meetings now. But again, not to, not to jump ahead on the discussion.
Yeah, you have the ability to approve, deny, or approve with conditions. As long as those conditions are reasonable, I don't see any reason why you can't address some of those concerns that you have. Or at least float them.
Jason, are you aware of anything I would, to kind of answer some questions here regarding scheduling the public hearing? As far as, are we obligated to schedule the public hearing provided that there's an application in and a fee in? I guess is my question.
Um, I believe so, I think that's the right, yeah. What would be the reason for not scheduling the public hearing?
I mean, is there any reason why you would say we're not going to schedule it?
Only if it was perhaps a land use that wasn't allowed in that zoning district. And they could appeal that, I guess, if they wanted to.
Planning Commission shall review the complete application for a special use permit and shall set a date for the public hearing within forty-five days thereafter.
So then we have to go. Okay. This will be scheduled when then?
Wednesday, May eighth.
And we'll have that other public hearing that night too then for Pen Inc. again?
Pen Inc. will be on the twenty-fourth of this month.
Okay.
The notice has one in the newspaper and neighbors have been notified.
Yeah, what happened there? I mean, this is the second one in like two months.
Yeah, this one was on the Mining Journal's end. They've had some turnover there. Sent them the public hearing notice and it didn't, didn't get in the paper.
But no notification that they did, anything like that?
Correct.
That's when you realized that something went wrong?
Uh, when did we realize it? We were getting, we were putting our packet together to go to the county.
And looking for the affidavit that we usually get from the Mining Journal saying, here it is in the paper and here it is by the editor, whoever stamps it, as it was in the paper.
We're on something every day.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion for, to have a public hearing for a special use permit request for item six C in Wednesday, April tenth, twenty twenty-four, as Planning Commission meeting agenda.
No, it's Wednesday, May eighth, is what Eric originally said.
Oh, I didn't, no, I was just referring to the, today's date for the.
Oh, I see.
To reference six C for the date, May fourth?
Eighth.
May eighth. Thank you.
More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, there we go.
And I, what I can always do too is let the applicant know there was some discussion about the state of the property, just so you know. And maybe that would get him to at least clean up the exterior, who knows what he's doing on the inside. But again, that would be fleshed out by the fire department when and if they do that inspection, so.
All right. Moving on to seven A, unfinished business, short-term rental discussion.
Yep, so I hope to keep this pretty quick tonight. Included, not in your packet, but I did throw it in everybody's mailbox today, is Eagle Harbor Township's Good Neighbor Guide. As we've previously, previously discussed them, it's been more along the lines of a Good Neighbor Packet. And I'm thinking like ten to fifteen pages of information. We found this recently, thought it was very succinct, to the point. There's some places where you need to fill in occupancy and contact information. But again, just an example of a, a pretty good example, a, a good example of a Good Neighbor Guide or a Good Neighbor Packet. And then also included is, kind of starting about halfway down on the next page, is Eagle Harbor Township's Short-Term Rental Ordinance in Full. As I understand this, there's been a lot of articles, like in the Daily Mining Gazette up out of Houghton, about Eagle Harbor Township's short-term rental situation. They had some planning commissioners who, or maybe township board members, I forget which body, but they own some short-term rentals before the ordinance was in place and then the ordinance goes into place and they tried to sneak theirs in. It's been lots of controversy. But it's a very, in my opinion, complete and it addresses almost everything you could think of when it comes to short-term rentals. I think it was put into place last year at some point, so it's very recent, up to date. It's got, again, everything you would want. And then, kind of, Jason had mentioned these earlier, on page ten dash twenty-two of that packet, right at the top, number five, the number of permits in Eagle Harbor Township shall not exceed eighteen percent of the total number of dwelling units in Eagle Harbor Township. Eagle Harbor Township has four hundred and seventy-two dwelling units and their population is half of that. That equates to eighty-five short-term rentals of those four hundred and seventy-two dwelling units. That's not to say they have eighty-five, but that's the maximum amount that they will allow. On the other hand, the city, Marquette City, has that hard cap at two fifty. They have nine thousand one hundred and fourteen dwelling units and that equates to three percent of their housing stock. In the township, that, using that three percent number, that would equate to sixty-three dwelling units in the township. Using Eagle Harbor's eighteen percent, we are looking at three hundred and seventy-seven short-term rentals in Marquette Township. And for your reference, Marquette Township, as per the American Community Survey, has two thousand ninety-four dwelling units.
Marquette Township, two thousand ninety-four?
Two thousand ninety-four, correct. And so currently, I forget the exact number of, that we have currently approved, is it twenty-five, twenty-four?
Yeah, it's less than thirty.
Somewhere in there, that twenty-four, twenty-five, whatever it is, less than thirty, that equates to less than one percent or about one percent of dwelling units in Marquette Township are currently short-term rentals. So obviously, three percent and eighteen percent are pretty kind of two extremes when we're talking about this, but just numbers to think about when and if we do put these restrictions in place. That's really all I have. Again, I included their ordinance for your reference, for your information. I'd encourage you to look at it because like I said, it addresses basically anything you could think of. Yeah.
I think on the, on page ten twenty-two, under paragraph nine, an owner shall hold no more than two.
Yeah, and that's.
That's to curtail some of these LLCs that have been coming in and.
Yeah, Bethany was voiced that concern as I did.
Yep.
Of the packet I gave you guys, this is the only page I highlighted stuff on. At the top, what I highlighted and that was pertaining to the numbers I just shared, that number nine was another item I highlighted and then number six, the distance between S T Rs. I'm not familiar exactly, I didn't look up what they define water district as, but I assume and being somewhat familiar with the area, they've got.
Very small utilities.
Right, kind of, again, similar to Marquette Township in that we've got some of the township served by water and sewer and the rest is on well and septic. And so they've got those two different, two different distance buffers. Again, depending on what district that, that short-term rental falls in. So, again, I highlighted that being that it could possibly apply to Marquette Township. And then also, again, number nine, the no more than two permits per owner. And we currently don't have any more than two per owner, again, we've got a couple that have two.
That would fit.
Right, so.
So this is all kind of food for thought as we wait to talk about these things with Roger. Roger is currently backed up.
Yeah, under, under nine, under the definition of an owner shall hold no more than two S T R permits. Uh, maybe one thing you could ask Roger is, is a limited partner of an LLC, could they?
Owner is defined.
Yep.
Could they, could they, you know, get around that?
Owner is defined any?
Where is it?
On page ten twenty, number eight.
Okay.
Yep, they start out their short-term rental section with definitions.
Oh, okay.
And owner is defined and included in there. Any other person, sole proprietorship, partnership, association, or corporation directly or indirectly in control of a building structure, real property. So I mean, they cover, they cover it.
It's pretty locked.
Yep.
So, yeah, take it home, read it, get to know it. I think there's some really good provisions in there that we could utilize. And as we have time to talk with Roger about your requests, we will get back to you with that.
Correspondents, distributed Marquette Township Master Plan Zoning Ordinance.
Yes, so again, we received a grant from MISTDA to improve housing stock and really specific to workforce and or missing middle. And as a result, we are allowed to pay a consultant to update our master plan. Threw in RFP, a couple of weeks ago. Results or submissions are due on Friday and hoping to choose a consultant sometime next week with a kickoff either in late May or early June. And I'm super excited about the opportunity to have somebody come in and talk to you besides me about what I think we should do. I think it's a good time for that and I'm looking forward to learning, you know, what some of the other communities are doing to attract housing, discuss transportation, look at utilities, you know, future growth, traffic circulation, pedestrian movements, short-term rentals, any of those hot button issues that we're working on. And I'm hoping that the fifty thousand dollars would also cover then a rewrite of our zoning ordinance. There are lots of provisions in our ordinance that we know of that are, I have marked in mind that are, you know, probably need to be changed. Was kind of waiting for a big opportunity like this to, to make all those happen and I think this is that opportunity now. So excited about that, I hope you guys are too. I think it's going to be a, a good learning process and we should get some good results from our RFP. So that was just included to let you know what we sent down.
I know I should have brought this up before, but I just thought of it. With the short-term rentals, did you see how the city of Marquette voted to support? Has the township board done that?
I don't believe so. I'm not sure if they're aware of that house bill, but. Yeah, that, that particular house bill just maintains control for locals.
Right.
The state's still going to, in my opinion, somehow be able to tax short-term rentals.
I think it might be a good idea for the township board to support that, you know, like the city did?
It, it may be, yeah, Jim, it may be, I don't know if they're aware of it yet. Hopefully, they still read the, the Mining Journal. But we can certainly make them aware of it and send the article to the board tomorrow.
Usually, the Township Association, the State Association makes recommendations as to what's going on out there in the big world of the state of Michigan. I haven't seen any of that stuff yet about what you're talking about. So my guess is, my guess is not everyone on the township board gets the Mining Journal.
Probably not. Might as well keep going, Linda, with the township board report.
Okay, so the township board met on Wednesday, April third. And under items to discuss, we talked about our two thousand twenty-four priority goals and they are right behind Steve on the board there. So if you want to glance at those on your way out this evening. We also talked about a depository and investment policy resolution, which we approved, which gives the treasurer some stated guidelines to follow. So that was approved. And then Renivar, which Denny talked a little bit about, did come and ask us for an agreement extension proposal for six months and we did grant that. And we also met with the people who represent Renivar virtually. And so we'll see. They seem pretty determined to get it done, that's what I'll say. Other than that, that was really it. Yeah.
Rock Committee report?
Yeah, they'll meet next week, but they did meet last month and we discussed, Eric was there, I believe, but I believe they discussed the master plan components that comprise recreation and some of our parks and things of that nature. So they had some recommendations at all. When it comes time for the Rec Committee to chime in on recreation, they'll have some suggestions for the master plan update.
Road Committee?
Road Committee did not meet in April. We usually meet the first Tuesday of every month. We do have a meeting scheduled on May seventh is our next one.
My name is Tony. Well, Eric was gone last week, so I had a fun week of, reminded me when I was a young planner doing everything. We approved a new home in Langford Drive, which is part of the McVonk P U D. We, I approved the boundary adjustment from barrel and beam to cross-construction. So remember, that was a contingency, so that was done. We have two dimensional variance requests, which are basically an exceedance of the garage sizes in two different zoning districts by two different applicants set for Monday, the twenty-ninth. Again, the RFPs will be due on Friday at close of business. There's, yeah, it's that time of year where there's lots going on, so I might have missed a couple of things, but. And then we'll be doing a board report for the next board meeting, so. Excited to hear from Renovare and for them to see if they can pull together what needs to be pulled together to get that project off the ground. Personally, for me, it's kind of a, kind of a legacy project in that, you know, we had an idea. We wanted to demonstrate, much like, you know, we wanted the township hall to be a demonstration site of good development with renewable energy and low VOC paint and things of that, dual-flush toilets. You know, it would be great to be able to pull off a development where there is workforce or missing middle housing on a piece of property that we used to own. I don't believe in local governments being real estate agents by any means, but I think that this is a good proposal, and hopefully we can work together to get it done. So, was happy to see the board supported that. We also had a meeting recently with Lori Halsworth from NTN to see if we can somehow piecemeal together the proposed trailhead development off the well road that we applied for a grant for but didn't get. So, utilizing our respective relationships and partners, we're going to explore that option to see if we can get some land cleared perhaps this year, and then maybe set up the parking lot, but maybe not put up the pavilion yet, and see if we can somehow fund the vault toilets and things of that nature, so. I think that's about it for now, unless there's any questions of me or Eric, but Eric has roller skates on.
One question, and I'd be remiss to my own conscience if I didn't ask this question of you. Yeah, I sent a email to Jill Renovari thanking her for what she's doing suggesting or telling her that I would ask the planning commission to put on their meeting for April twenty-fourth an agenda item to vote on whether or not this planning commission would like to have an informal or a designated work session with Jill Renovari and Morgan Shannon. And so my question to you is, in that email, is my copying you and my reference to that sufficient request to have that item put on the agenda for April twenty-fourth?
Yeah, I was kind of waiting to hear back from them, Denny. I don't know if you remember at the board meeting, but they also said that they would rather have that discussion in front of the planning commission as part of the PUD process.
They didn't say that.
Okay.
They said they, Jill said she'd like to talk to all the planning commissioners.
Correct.
She didn't say as part of the PUD.
So, yes, if they get back and they're available on the twenty-fourth, I'd be happy to put it on the agenda. Not an issue.
Well, yeah, well, I'm not satisfied with that answer. Because as a planning commissioner, I think I have a right, I guess, to ask you to put something on the agenda. And all I'm asking you is to put on the agenda for the April twenty-fourth meeting whether this body should take a vote, and maybe the vote will be known as to whether or not this planning commission should have a work session with Renovare that is not part of the normal required PUD protocol. That's what I want.
Oh, okay. I think that's.
So I think it was pretty clear, pretty clear from my, from my email. So I just wanted to, I just wanted to be clear that that's my request, and I would hope that you would honor that request, and so the board here, or the commission, could vote on whether they think my idea is all wet or whether they'd like to have a little, you know, work session and hear from Renovare.
Sure.
I think Jim gets to, I think you asked Jim, and Jim does that. I think the chairperson does that. Is that not correct?
That would be up to Jim, yeah. Or if you want a more formal answer, I can, just give me a little bit of time, and I can get you a more formal response to if that's appropriate or not, because it might be a question for Roger, too. I don't know. I don't have an answer for you right now.
As long as, as long as it doesn't, as long as the answer doesn't get back to me, to us, as a board or as a commission, subsequent to the time that Renovare does their formal presentation, because I'd like to be able to have a work session with them just to share ideas, just so that our, my fellow planning commissioners can hear from them, can meet, can ask questions, because there's issues about unit size and et cetera, et cetera, that, you know, I participated in good faith in that meeting on April third as a member of the public. I didn't, and I commented during the initial public comment period. But before the second comment period occurred, everybody signed off from Renovare, and you did too. So I didn't get a chance to respond to some of the things that they raised. And I think that some of the things that were talked about are things that the planning commissioners here should hear. And, you know, I have my opinions, you know what they are. But I'd like to be able to see if the other planning commissioners might have some other questions, and perhaps might agree with some of the ideas that I had in conjunction with the discussion with Renovare.
So you're aware that during the PUD process, there is an initial meeting where it says explicitly in the ordinance where you get together to share ideas and no decisions are made.
And I wasn't invited to that meeting.
No, 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 this is at the planning commission level.
Yes, and I wasn't invited to that meeting.
It hasn't occurred yet.
Well, I thought, I thought they said at that, at that April thirty.
As staff, we had a meeting with them. But that hasn't occurred at the planning commission level yet.
Right, so, but here's my objection to, here's my concern about what you just said. With Longyear, the first time that we met with Longyear was that what you just described. Okay? Well, Longyear came in at that point, and everything was, everything was determined. They had, they gave us, they lined the walls here with pictures of what they were going to do, and they told us what they were going to do, and that never changed, except for the number of units. And then they came to the second one. So there was no opportunity, okay, for any kind of really, they had already invested everything. And Renovare is working their butts off to get this done, to get financing. So, rather than have them put all kinds of effort into something that's already predetermined when they come before the planning commission, I don't think it's fair to Renovare for them not to know what some of the concerns are of the planning commission. They're already, they've already, they're going to line things up already, and they're not going to be really amenable to change their minds about anything. So, I want the opportunity for this planning commission to have some influence. And I'm not trying to tell them, and see, this is why Jim and I have a disagreement. Jim is, I respect Jim tremendously, but he's said in the past, we can't tell a developer what to do. Well, hell, yes, we can tell them what to do. This whole ordinance book tells developers what to do, what size buildings to build, you know, what setbacks to do. And that's all I'm trying to convince Renovare to do, is to create units of such a size and configuration that they'll be affordable. I'm not trying to dictate market price. I'm all for free market. So I'm not trying to dictate a price in that sense. But I'm trying to dictate, or I'm trying to plan and ask them to develop a size that will be demonstrably affordable to people in our community that have really, right now, have no hope of ever owning a house. That's my concern. So I would like to get on the agenda prior to the time that Renovare comes in here and has done all this work, and is, have their minds made up. That's my.
Yeah, I will explore that from your behalf.
Thank you. So I would like to have, you know, that as an agenda item, prior to the time they come in for their initial presentation. Thank you.
On, what agenda do they got?
Six months.
Six months? Okay, if we do that, is that going to slow anything up on the process for them?
I'm not sure.
It's a Zoom meeting. For an hour of their time, they can take, you know, to have a little, little work session with us.
I think Denny wants to have a chance to talk to them before they bake the cake.
That's it. That's all I'm talking about. Because there are tremendous pressures, trying to line up lenders and all this other stuff, and, you know. Their PUD plan right now is, I don't think complies with our ordinance or master plan. Because it doesn't provide affordable housing, because it's based on the size of the units. So I just want to have an opportunity to change that.
Does that mean any housing that's proposed in the township has to be affordable?
No, but the reason Renovare was contacted was because they hold themselves out to the public and to this public body, planning commission, as an affordable housing developer for workforce housing. That's why they were invited. That was part of the understanding of our contacting them and our engaging with them.
And I think their proposal demonstrates.
That's a disagreement that you and I have.
Okay.
Yeah. You have a different interpretation of the master plan and the ordinance than I do, so.
Well, I have a different interpretation of what workforce and missing middle housing is to them, because I think they're hitting what the state demonstrates as being affordable, but also based on our median income, which is different than, say.
Sixty-four thousand dollars is what our median income is in the township. And a one-thousand-square-foot unit, that's the smallest unit that they're doing, at three hundred, three hundred dollars a square foot to construct, is a three-hundred-thousand-dollar home before you even put it on the market. That's not affordable for our demographics, even for between sixty and eighty percent of our median income. And I have a memo with the figures on it, I can do it, but you can do it too. But that's just not affordable, what they have in mind. And what they're doing is, they're making these vague statements about how, oh, we're going to get some lenders to help out with, with down payments, and, you know, this and that. That's very speculative. But what's not speculative is the size of a unit. And the size of a unit dictates the price, and the market drives that price. And the modern trend in affordable housing, as I've shared with this planning commission, with the township board, and with Renovare, recently published in New York Times.
Is size.
Is, is size. And you don't have to, I'm not talking about individual standalone units. These are combined units. It's, it's not. I don't, I, you know, I admit that I'm crazy, but I'm not that crazy.
No, I guess the only thing I, I have to disagree with is, okay, you're saying a four-hundred-and-fifty square foot, I mean, that's just a room. And so, who, how many people are going to pay a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar for a room?
That's, well, quite a few people.
Just one room?
It's not one room. It's a bedroom, a kitchen, and a bathroom. And I even sent you, in my last email, I sent you floor plans.
Right.
You know? And you, and in fact, Renovare, in their muniching development, even though they're rental units, are developing small units, three hundred square feet to a thousand square feet.
It's senior housing at Snowberry. You can go see what it looks like. That's about the size, senior housing at Snowberry.
Well, look, I tell you, my wife just moved out of a house in Bloomington, Indiana that was eight-hundred-and-fifty square feet. And that had three bedrooms, a kitchen, a living room, and a bathroom. Okay? So you can design things, and people will buy a studio condo. They will buy a studio condo. They will buy a one-bedroom condo that's under four-hundred-and-fifty square feet.
They buy them in Florida every day.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
And that's affordable.
But let's, let's kind of figure out if we can do that. I think we can have a work session as a planning commission.
That's all I'm asking.
And that's all we really want, is a work session.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and so.
Share ideas.
Yeah, you just have to ask the powers that can do that.
And I don't, you know, I mean, my philosophy is, if I have an idea, and I vote one way, and the rest of you vote another way, that's what we're about. I accept it. I accept it.
Yeah.
But by the same token, if I advocate enough, maybe I'll change some minds that are sitting on this planning commission, and maybe that idea will prevail. So that's all it is. Yeah.
So, yeah, we have a two-bedroom condo in Florida. It's about eight-hundred-and-ninety-six square feet.
There you go. You're.
I would never live there every day.
Well, if you were.
That was me, yeah.
If you were trying to get into the housing market, maybe you'd buy it.
Yeah, I know that the co-op did a study probably three years ago now as to a livable wage in this community. I'll see if I can get that.
Well, that's changed drastically.
I'm not saying it hasn't, but I, I'll ask if they're doing another one, because they.
Something just on the national news about that tonight.
Yeah, they did increase the wage they paid their employees, and people are looking at that, too. But, yeah, just go ahead and ask.
Well, twenty dollars an hour only gets you forty thousand dollars a year.
Yeah.
And what's a third of that?
Gosh, yeah, social security hardly pays anything to people.
Thirteen thousand dollars? And can you, can you, can you find a house you can buy, or a condo you can buy for a thousand dollars a month? All right.
We all agree with that. Interesting marketplace.
I hate to say it, but we're kind of responsible for the affordable housing problem, also anybody that sells their house. Because if you feel that bad about it, you should say, I'm going to, I want to let somebody buy my five-hundred-thousand-dollar house.
Oh, shit.
It's our own fault, because realtors go in there and say, all right, your house is worth five hundred. So that's what you ask for. So, I mean, it's kind of the law of supply and demand that determines the prices, and the average house in Marquette is, you know, like, two sixty-two, sixty-eight, I think it was, last time I looked. So it's, I mean, it's hard, and I know, I'm not disagreeing with you, Denny. I know it's hard for people to afford houses.
Right, and, you know, I mean.
My son has to live up in Ishwaming because, you know, they're.
How many of your servers can, can buy a three-hundred-thousand-dollar house?
Half of our staff is up there.
Yeah.
Because of that.
But, but these, these, these housing units that are contained in that New York Times article that I just sent you, one guy bought one for a hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. And the developers doubled their money in two years.
And I know what you're saying also about that, but at the same time, these younger kids can't afford to buy a house because they don't have the down payment for it. So, I mean, even a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar house, that's thirty thousand dollars you're going to need down, and how many young kids have thirty thousand dollars to put down on that?
Well, how about a married couple? Two, two jobs, making eighty thousand dollars a year.
I'll bet there aren't many people.
Getting, 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 getting a loan like they did, like I did from my parents, to put a down payment down, then pay them back.
Oh, yeah.
That happens.
Well, I know, there was MISTDA when I bought my first house for thirty-five thousand, and you only needed ten percent down, thirty-five hundred dollars. So things have changed a lot since then.
That's what I'm saying. But we have, we have to, we have to push that back.
I feel sorry for all these younger people.
Well, I want to, I want to do more than feel sorry. I want to make a change.
And we can't keep approving short-term rentals because they're part of the problem.
Exactly.
They're a huge part of the problem.
Then some of these people are letting travel people live in them for work. So, I mean, it's helping, too, in a way. It's not part of the problem. It's not all of the problem.
No, but, but all, all, there's a housing problem, and I don't know. Yeah, no one knows the magic.
It's hard for me to believe that there was a housing problem in Marquette, but, I mean, were all the people coming from the ladies' houses and the new ones and the new apartments?
They're retiring and coming back to Marquette to live.
The pandemic played quite a role.
Yeah, and.
Some people cashing out in the city, wanting to be in the place that they wanted to be, closer to family perhaps, or being able to work remotely.
Working from home.
And they're going to keep coming because we got the most clean water.
Paradise. This is paradise up here. It is.
But. Well, I got, I got one thing before we wrap this up. So we were talking about rezoning, potentially rezoning the Fly Ash Road. I'm not talking about. I just have a general question. If the landowner doesn't want rezoning done, is it tough, we're doing it anyway?
No.
Okay, I was just kind of curious about that.
You know, I didn't mean to say that.
No, 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 no. I was just wondering, when, when you, if you, we looked at that, and you said, you know, that'd be a great place for that to be, this zoning district, and the landowner said, nope. So we, then it would be no, is that correct?
Right, what I'm saying is that we haven't even had. Right, what I'm saying is that we haven't even had the chance to explore, like, let's say, a future land use.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. I just, I just, I just want to know.
Out over it.
I just want to know, if the landowner says, no, I'm not interested, then the township doesn't do it.
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Yeah, that's, that's a taking.
Right, okay, I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, we don't, not in the business of that, but even, you know, we're, we're kind of starting to see the flavor of what people want to do out there and it's commercial and it's industrial. So we're, it's kind of nice because the area is isolated and it has been isolated for years. So if some of those land uses want to occur out there, we should.
If the owner's amenable.
If the owner's amenable, yeah.
You're moving the parties.
Well, it's just, it would be nice to expand. I mean, you think of industrial, don't just get locked into like, you know, Captain Caveman and the Flintstones. I mean, we're, we're looking at, you know, perhaps high-tech industry, manufacturing. There's lots of different things that fit into industrial.
Don't we have a medical device company here?
Yeah, absolutely, yep. Research, development, high-tech industry, those are all, you'd find those in an industrial district that's served by three-part service and it's a TIF district and every time they build something there, it pays back the amount of utilities that you spent to put in there to have that grow as you planned it.
Has the township ever looked at as industrial parks?
That's what I'm talking about.
No, I mean, industrial parks where, where roads are developed into it, where infrastructure is put into it for businesses, for it's all developed for industrial.
Not in this community, but yes, in Ashland, we have a TIF district that was set up that way.
They have it in Marquette where RTI is. That's an industrial park in there.
That's what I'm saying, like, we have the ability now to explore those options. Obviously, we're not going to do anything that Mr. Storey's not going to support, but if we were like, hey, what would you think about these types of land uses being allowable in the property that you own in case you ever wanted to subdivide and, you know, sell some off? Resource production is very limited.
Yeah.
And for good reason. It's meant to be a preservative type of zoning district where you have 40 acre minimum. The problem we run into is you have people now that have had camps out there and obviously they lack one or more of the services that you would normally have in a single-family residential dwelling unit, which would be, you know, maybe they don't have a well and septic, maybe they don't have frontage on a public road or a seasonal road even. They're just out there and now they want addresses and fire numbers so they can get insurance. And we're like, we can't provide you with that. We, we can't do that because you're living full-time in an area where we don't allow full-time residential.
So I, am I misunderstanding that you can have residential in a resource production district, but one-acre lots?
You know, I think it's.
That doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, I think the planning commission, remember the old Saloon Trail development? That was in resource production. I think you went as small as three acres there.
How can, how can that be in a 40-acre zoning district?
Because that's the way that our ordinance is written. Those are some of the things that I'm talking about we need to get rid of.
You can create one-acre parcels in a 40-acre zoning district?
That's what it says in the master plan.
Well, there are some other caveats to that, but, I mean, you know, it has to have utilities, has to be fronted on a public road.
How can it be a one-acre parcel in a 40-acre zoning?
It's, it's, what does it say, 40,000 square feet or larger detached, single-family detached. I'm telling you, those are some of the things that we're going to attack as part of this master.
That doesn't make any sense.
We also have a provision in the ordinance that says you can have a multifamily if you're north of Werner and east of Ontario or west of Ontario, and that's it. That's spot zoning. So hoping I'm going to be able to assimilate duplexes and multifamily in different areas of the township and that will affect housing. I think the, the ability for us to perform and make some zoning text amendments will affect affordability more than anything that the market will do on its own.
Love to see a walkable community.
I have a picture. I save stuff.
Right there at Schwemweig Park?
I save stuff all the time that I see. And I saw, this was a shipping container community. We can adjourn or whatever, I don't care, but I just wanted you guys to see this.
Is it a circle?
They were shipping containers to make a house, right?
Well, this is a little different.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Okay?
Oh, neat.
These are what other communities are doing.
Hey, yeah.
How's that different than a mobile home park?
Well, real mobile homes different by definition. So that's what I'm hoping that these.
Than a box?
That a consultant will come in and assist us.
Than a metal box?
Hey.
Obviously it has to, we, we can lean on building codes to, you know, they have to, it has to comply with building codes, but I'm telling you, people are being very innovative.
No, I, I understand that, but I mean, if you're going to allow, you know, a 14 by 60 container, why not allow to have mobile homes?
I saw one, a shipping container, and I'll leave you with this. They cut in the windows, they painted the whole thing black and then they put half log siding around the whole thing and metal roof. It was beautiful. Beautiful. Big bay windows.
A lot of.
Well, that's only 400 square feet.
There you go. A lot of these smaller houses now, the way they're building them are really nice too. They have a loft up there, like, you know, your bedroom's up there and I mean.
If you haven't had the chance to check out, and of course, they were 150,000 apiece, but the ones that the gentleman behind.
I did.
Those 550, they're very nice.
Aaron.
Mr. Leppen is a world-renowned architect. He's very sharp.
Well, he's, he's building units right there at the corner of Sugarloaf and 550.
On behalf of?
City of Marquette.
On behalf of.
Who's funding them?
Who?
I don't know. Who is?
Who?
I don't think it's the city. It's a developer, but yes, he's, he's involved in it.
I don't, I don't know who he's building it for.
Well, he went to Vanderboom School, elementary school.
Oh, good.
He graduated with my son. So you want to go see those units? I will call him.
I did. I went, I, I.
You want to go see? I wanted to go see him back.
I peeked in the windows.
I'll call Kevin.
I thought we told her.
Are we adjourned?
We adjourned? No, no, we're not done yet. Do we still have to go through announcements in public com, oh, announcements? Anyone have any announcements? No. Any other public comment? John? All right.
You have 9:20.
Additional comments by planning commissioners? Heck no.
None.
Come on, Dan, you must have something.
So you should be getting a new garbage container in May was our plan initially.
Why?
Yeah, mhm, for garbage.
Can we replace the one we have? That's brand new.
For recycling.
No, to replace your old beat-up one that you use for garbage, not for recycling.
Oh, this is for garbage, not recycle.
Yeah, we should be getting them soon. We, we are.
Really?
We're going to get garbage that's.
Same size?
Uh, there, you can buy either size. There's two choices.
With wheels?
With wheels. And it's going to be red. Yeah. So I.
So you can tell them apart, right?
Right.
No, so they can be picked up automatically.
Well, yeah, so you can tell them apart, so you know which one to throw it in. But yeah, they'll have an arm. The truck will have an arm like they do in the cities.
You're saying the magic word, Jim? If no one else says, okay, meeting adjourned.
Okay.